Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's city council meeting. We'll call the meeting order. Our first order of business tonight is our invocation and our pledge of allegiance. Tonight, we have Pastor Willie Stevens from Crossroads Church, and then please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. Pastor?
Good evening. It's a privilege and an honor to have this opportunity to be with you tonight, and to our Honorable Mayor, all the members of the city council. I appreciate this. It's a rare opportunity, and what can I say more? I just need all your autographs when I'm done. Buy your heads with me if you would, please. Our Father in Heaven, as we gather here this evening, may Your Holy Spirit overshadow this meeting. Bless everyone with the fortitude to face the challenges ahead. As Your Word tells us in James 1:5, "If any of you lack wisdom, you should ask God, who gives generously to all without finding fault, and it will be giving to you." We expect you, Father, to continually bless Casa Grande City Council and their constituents. Bless the members with courage, give them wisdom and knowledge to be well-equipped to face any obstacle that may disrupt their plans for our city's future. Bless each person here and those that are absent with good health. May those within the sound of my voice take away something that inspires them to be a greater force in our community and faithful representatives of the cross. In Jesus Christ's holy name, everyone sit. Amen and amen. God bless you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Pastor. All right, next item on our agenda is the roll call. Let the roll call show that everyone's present except for Mr. Lavender. I believe he has an excuse, so if we could get an excuse.
So moved.
Yes.
Before you excuse Mr. Lavender, did you just expect me to indicate that they'd be here watching at 7:30?
All right, we'll give him a late excuse then. Does he need a late excuse? If he's gonna be here? No, okay. All right. What if he doesn't show up?
He's got an unexcused absence.
Then he has an unexcused absence. Okay. All right. Minutes is our next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes of the council regular meeting of September 16, 2024, except the minutes of the Arts and Culture Commission meeting of September 9, 2024, except the minutes of the Youth Commission meeting of September 14, 2024, and except the minutes of the Community Service Advisory Board meeting of August 22, 2024.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next is claims. Item D.
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept and pay the claims dated September 11, 2024 through October 1, 2024, as presented.
Second?
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, claims are approved. Next is our meeting agenda approval. Larry, a change?
Staff is requesting that Mayor and Council remove item G-13 and that you consider that separately from consent agenda. Chief Keane will be making the presentation.
Okay, G-13?
Yes, sir.
So we'll consider that then, just before public comments. Okay. Any other changes? Anyone?
No.
All right, seeing no other changes, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the amendment of G-13.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of the consent agenda as presented with the exception of G-13.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the agenda is approved with the noted amendment. Okay. Next then is our consent agenda. So all items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Are there any other items that we want to remove from the agenda or have further discussion?
No.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of the consent agenda as presented with the exception of G-13.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Edwards?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, so next item is then G-13. This is Consider Approval Resolution Number 5702, authorizing and ratifying the submission of a grant application to the Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation. Thank you to the Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation, authorizing us to purchase a vehicle, Polaris, a local vehicle. Chief?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. I just wanted to highlight this item for you this evening because this is a good example of businesses that we work with a lot in the city. This grant is coming from Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation, also Arizona Public Service. And we do a lot with APS and a lot with firehouse grants. This was a case where one of our younger guys asked if he could apply for a Firehouse Subs grant. We said, yeah, run with it, try. And lo and behold, we got it. So I'm asking you to pass Resolution 5702. It's for acceptance of the grant and the purchase of a Polaris Range Crew XP1000. Also, it includes the outfit. That's a vehicle that we use for, you've seen it out, we have it out at the mountain and stuff, and we also have it at a lot of events, the parades and special events. We also can use it when we deploy to like a wildland fire. We can deploy a hurt team or a medical team on that, which is obviously if it's out of town, we get reimbursed for that. But there's a lot of uses for the vehicle. Firehouse Subs did grant us $41,663.11. I wanted to point out that the original grant, we were having to purchase this from Polaris, which is back in Wisconsin. We did some additional paperwork and some checking, and we actually fixed it and got it set up so that we could actually do it here in town. Ryan Wiles is here. He's the general manager of Iron City Polaris on Pinellas, and I got to go over and check out their new facility. It's beautiful, and our apparatus is sitting over there. They're still waiting for a couple of parts to arrive before they start upfitting it. And once they get it outfitted and done, we'll let you know, because we'll have a little, a deal over there. So that's really it. This was purchased under a Sourcewell contract, and I think that's it, unless you guys have any questions.
Is anybody from the Firehouse Subs Foundation here?
They are not. The Firehouse Subs Foundation is actually in Florida.
Okay.
So we're gonna do a press release, obviously.
Just wanted to thank them, that's all.
Yeah, and we're gonna, we're gonna have them out to the event when we have it. But the fire department has a really close relationship with Iron City. You know, our captain, Chris Stevens, works at Iron City Polaris. So they felt very strongly about working on this project and...
Yeah, Ryan, stand up, just to show yourself. There you go. Thank you, thank you, Polaris.
But we'll definitely, when we do the press release, we'll get them involved when we have the unveiling of the Polaris when it's finished.
Cool.
Unless you have any questions, that's all I have.
Any questions? Anybody?
No.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'll entertain a resolution number, please, Gloria.
Resolution Number 5702, a resolution of the council, the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, authorizing and ratifying the submission of a grant application to Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation, authorizing the city manager to accept grant funds in the amount of $42,406.13 for the purpose of purchasing a rescue support vehicle, authorizing the purchase of a rescue vehicle from Iron City Polaris, authorizing the city manager to execute grant and purchase agreements, authorizing the city finance director to accept and disperse funds as necessary, and authorizing the transfer of budget authority.
Mayor McFarland, I move that we approve Resolution Number 5702 as presented.
Second?
I have a motion and a second, Gloria. Can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Edwards?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, next is our public comment section, and I would, since I think there are several people here that are planning to speak on item L1, which is our public hearing, I would recommend that if you're here for that, that you wait for that, because it is a public hearing, you don't have an opportunity to speak. But if there's anyone else here who is here for any other subject, then this is your opportunity to address the council. I would ask you to approach the podium. I think all these that I have, all these speaking cards are here, although Brian Patrick, did you, were you here for that?
Yes, sir.
For the L1? Okay, then I'll hold your card. And then, again, keep your comments to three minutes, and understand it's not agendized, so we can't really respond, if you will. So if there's anyone here to speak on any other subject, this is your opportunity. I will open the floor. All right, so you're all here for L1. Great. So I'm gonna close the floor, and we'll move on. Move on to award of contracts in L1, Resolution 5703.
Thank you. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council authorize a contract with Sunland Asphalt and Construction LLC to perform our annual pavement preservation program for this year. Staff is requesting authorization to contract this through a City of Glendale job order contract, and that is number C-22-1292. This project will consist of a variety of pavement treatments, depending on the, what each pavement section, the condition is. And we spent a lot of time looking at our pavement conditions that are done with our pavement management system, and then evaluated that with our staff, as well as bringing in our contractor, to look at each of those pavement segments, to make sure that we're using the appropriate level of treatment to move this program forward. We did budget $2.7 million for this in this year's fiscal budget, and we're asking for full spending authority of that to provide us with a little bit of contingency. But the contract as proposed is $2,402,431. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Matt, anybody?
No.
All right, thank you, Kevin. I don't see any questions, so I'll call for a resolution number, please. Nope, wrong one. Yeah, resolution number, sorry.
Resolution Number 5703, a resolution of the council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a proposal from Sunland Asphalt and Construction LLC for the annual pavement preservation program, authorizing expenditure of public funds, and authorizing execution of a contract with or purchase order to Sunland Asphalt and Construction LLC.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve Resolution Number 5703 as presented.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Edwards?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, we do have boards and commissions appointments tonight. This is our youth commission, and I'm gonna kinda hand this off to you, Matt.
Thanks, Mayor. With the youth commission, it's not a city council, a student council, it's not a student service club, it's an official board of the city. And as we've been talking over these years, I know the mayor and Donna have done a lot of work with the boards, and it was thought of, hey, why don't we get youth representation, because we really wanna hear from them, and one more opportunity for them to, to let their voice be heard on these commissions, but also, you know, get them involved in the process, you know, because that's what they wanna do. They spend a lot of time working on this commission, so they wanna be on even more commissions. So it's great, and it'll be great to have that good, you know, a good outlook from the future, just to hear how they're doing. And also, they will be non-voting members of the commissions, but yet they'll get to share their opinions and be able to speak and everything. But it'd be just a great way to get more people involved in our boards and commissions, especially with that, that voice of the youth. So I think this is an exciting...
It's not every board, right?
No, just the Arts and Culture Commission, Community Service Advisory Board, Historic Preservation, and Transit Advisory, which we heard from earlier, so, yeah. So the ones that really affect the younger people in Casa Grande.
Excellent. Yeah, this would be a good, good opportunity for them, and it's a good opportunity for us too, so. All right, we just need to approve that then? Okay?
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve the following youth commissioners to serve terms starting November 24th, starting November 2024, ending June 20th, 2025, for the Arts and Culture Youth Commissioner Quinn Wong, Community Service Advisory Board Youth Commissioner Sarah Olson, Historic Preservation Commission Youth Commissioner Anthony Amato, and the Transit Advisory Committee Youth Commissioner Kendra Wilson.
I don't see them here. They're not here.
They're not. A lot of them are at the other meeting and got some stuff going on, yeah.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, well, congratulations to those new four commissioners and their appointment. All right, next, we're gonna move to item K, considering approval Resolution Number 5704. This is our short-term rental regulations.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you tonight, for your consideration, is an ordinance for the short-term rental regulation, like we've talked about previously. In the study session back in May, staff recommended and council-supported having a short-term rental, take more of a, an ordinance for short-term rentals, take more of a balanced approach, where aspects that would be helpful in regulating the short-term rentals would be included, where things that could be overly burdensome wouldn't be. And the ordinance before you does include that, where the state statute allows a variety of different things, and the aspects that were allowed to be included in the ordinance that staff determined would be beneficial were included, and the ones that seemed that they may not be as much of an ROI for the impact that would have on the property owners were not included. And so that would be as least impactful on them in a negative way. And so the intent of this, to reiterate, is not to try to regulate for the sake of regulating the property owners for short-term rentals. Instead, it's to ensure that any problems can be dealt with and can be addressed, and that the neighbors for the short-term rentals can be able to maintain a high quality of life. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Yeah, Rob, I mean, the primary, primary purpose is really just kinda get them to register as a, as a business in town, so that we know who we're dealing with. If a neighbor has a problem with somebody, then we know who the owner is, and we can actually contact the owner directly, versus a renter who might be, a short-term renter, who might be in there renting for a week. So, plus, if there's issues, then we know who to go to. Anybody have any other comments or questions?
No.
I've got a question, when I was kinda doing some research on this. It says properties, but I know there's, there's people that rent out a room in their home, like, so the primary person is usually there. Are they required as well to get, if they just, not renting out the whole property, but just part of it?
It's a good question, Councilmember Herman, and yes. Even just a single room would be counted as a property under the ordinance.
Okay. What about the pool rental thing? Is that, honestly?
People do that, yeah.
Have you heard, yeah. Is that part of this, or is it just for people that are spending the night or whatever?
So is in, there's a specific pool that was included?
No, like, some people do short-term rentals, like, you can rent someone's pool for a day?
Correct.
Or an afternoon?
So that would be counted as a property as well. So any, any location that has a dwelling place and any other amenities would all be lumped in as one property.
Donna?
You know, I had the opportunity to sit on the Lake of Cities and Towns Committee when this first came up. And, you know, we're very fortunate, because Sedona, Fountain Hills, and some of those communities kinda was behind the ball, and they had a lot of trouble with short-term rentals. So this is a balanced approach for us, without taking away from the homeowner.
Property rights.
So I think, right, and I think that this is a happy medium for us to look at, and the nice thing about ordinance is we can always go back and, and fine-tune it if we have to. But this is a really good place for us.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
All right, team, you know, other comments or questions, then I will call for resolution number, please, Gloria.
Resolution Number 5704, a resolution of the mayor and council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, declaring as a public record a certain document pertaining to short-term rental regulations.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of Resolution Number 5704 as presented.
Second.
All right, should be noted, too, that we've had several study sessions on this. This is, so this has been something that the council's pretty familiar with. So, all right, then I will ask for, I have a motion and a second. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Edwards?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. Right, public hearing tonight, which is...
I'm sorry.
There is a second item with that, because you adopt a resolution which basically adopts that by reference, and then the ordinance itself.
All right, then I'll call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria. Sorry, didn't see that, even though it's bolded.
Ordinance Number 3447, an ordinance of the council, the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending the Casa Grande Municipal Code by adopting Chapter 5.28 relating to the regulating short-term rentals, establishing penalties for violation thereof, providing for the severability and establishing an effective date.
Mayor McFarland, I would move...
Well, that's pretty good, though.
We were right on, stereo.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance Number 3447 as presented.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Edwards?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, now for the public hearing. All right, so item L1 is to consider approval...
Should we test until Jeff gets here?
No. Do you want, do we wanna wait for Jeff, or what do you wanna do? I mean, it could be half an hour, it could be 10 minutes. Yeah, I think, I think we'll start. So item L1 is public hearing, considering approval ordinance Number 1178454, which is a zoning, changing zoning from urban ranch to planned area development, PDA. So we'll start with the presentation, and Gloria, you're on.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, city council members. So this request in front of you this evening is for a zone change for approximately five acres of property, currently zoned urban ranch, and the request is for a planned area development zone to accommodate a proposed QuickTrip. A little bit of background on this request. In March, Planning Commission, on a vote of five to two, moved to forward a recommendation to council that you approve this zone change. At that same meeting, Planning Commission, on a vote of four to three, approved the associated major site plan for QuickTrip, subject to conditions of record and subject to city council approval of this zone change. And of course, we're talking about the property located at the southeast corner of McCartney and Tucker. On June 3, this zone change request was presented to city council, but the matter was tabled to provide an opportunity for QuickTrip to take into consideration feedback received during the public comment portion, and also to host a neighborhood meeting. That neighborhood meeting was held in July, and it was attended by approximately 22 residents, primarily from the McCartney Center neighborhood to the northwest. As a result of the feedback received in the neighborhood meeting, I wanted to outline some of the changes from the original request and what's in front of you this evening. Originally, a 7,300-square-foot store was proposed that also had entailed seven bays, highlighted in orange on the screen for diesel truck fueling, under a 4,200-square-foot canopy. And there were 15 large parking spaces to the rear of the site to accommodate large vehicles. And within the proposed zoning guide, there was not any restriction imposed regarding duration of parking. Their request has since been revised to accommodate a smaller store footprint identified in yellow. It's now proposed to be 5,300 square feet, and they have reduced the number of bays for the diesel truck fueling, highlighted in orange to the rear of the store, to three bays, and it's under a 2,200-square-foot canopy. They've also reduced the parking spaces for large vehicles to 11, identified in blue on the screen. And they have updated the zoning guide... And they have updated the zoning guide to impose a requirement restricting parking of vehicles over a gross vehicle weight rating of 12,000 pounds to no longer than an hour. And of course, these changes, reducing the size of the store, the fuel canopy, the parking, will result in an amendment to the major site plan. The fuel canopy for regular vehicle fueling to the west of the store, between the store and Tucker, identified in that light red, has not changed. The fact that they have reduced the number of fueling canopy space for the diesel trucks results in a development with minimal fueling for diesel, and it does not provide the type of truck stop amenities found in City Code Section 17121520, where a truck stop is defined. A truck stop shall mean any one or more of the following, when you have four or more diesel fuel dispensers, two or more bays for truck washing, and facilities for diesel engine repair. Of course, a lot of the commentary and concern that we've received has been surrounding the presence of any semi-truck stopping at the facility. That's, that's viewed as an impact regardless of whether there's one truck stopping or, or accommodation for, for seven trucks. And then I also want to point out that the signage planned for the site, which was also embedded into the zoning guide, has not changed. There, there was concern that there would be extra tall signage. However, this zoning proposes monument signs, no taller than 15 feet, and within the PED guide, they're showing a 14-foot tall monument sign that could be placed along Tucker and along McCartney. There is a sign slightly taller than 22 feet for the truck scale, but that's condition that it's not allowed to be abutting a public roadway. It would be interior to the site behind the QT store. When reviewing zone changes, the criteria on the screen has to be evaluated, and the staff report that has been provided to you goes into each of these in greater detail. But I do want to talk about the three highlighted items, because I think they're the most pertinent to this request. The first one is regarding the conformance to the city's general plan. So the site is within the area of our 2030 general plan designated as commerce and business. That's the area in blue. But it is right on the border of the neighborhood's general plan designation identified in yellow. Essentially, Tucker Road is that dividing line between the commerce and business designation and the neighborhood's designation. When turning to the general plan and looking at what that commerce and business general plan category means, it's areas designed to promote uses that can best benefit from Casa Grande's strategic location at the intersection of major interstates. It goes on to say that areas designated as commerce and business are located along interstates, parkways, and specific areas along major arterial roadways, such as McCartney Road, where auto-oriented uses are dominant. The commerce and business category represents a strategic effort to place auto-oriented uses in appropriate environments. And I think the, the greatest part of the sensitivity here is, again, is that it is right on that border between neighborhoods and commerce and business. There is a lot of sensitivity to that. I do want to point out that when you look at our general plan map from a wider scale, most of I-10 is flanked with that commerce and business category, because the idea is right off the interstate, there would be highway-oriented uses. A lot of that activity would involve trips on and off the interstate, but not necessarily permeating into the city. And also, when looking at the general plan category, commercial is listed as one of the appropriate land uses within the commerce and business category. However, when looking into the neighborhoods category, there is some commercial listed, but it's more neighborhood scale. And that would probably denote the difference between the Circle K that is within the neighborhoods category at the northwest corner versus the proposed QuickTrip at the southeast corner. The, the question is, is, is could a business very similar to Circle K be a little bit more intense or more supportable if more intensity was proposed because it was in that commerce and business category? And I do think that the question comes down to the proximity of this site to the neighborhoods category. When looking a little bit deeper into conformance with the general plan, it does have to meet goals, policies, and applicable elements. One goal is to create visibility without compromising attractive streetscapes or community character. It can be argued that the development of this QuickTrip meets that in that the more intense part of that development, the truck fueling, is pushed to the south of the building, so the, so the QuickTrip convenience store itself screens that diesel fuel canopy area from view of McCartney. And then, and, and one of the action steps related to that goal is that cite auto-oriented businesses to appropriate locations along interstates and/or select arterial corridors. Another review criteria associated with zone change is a relationship of the plan elements to conditions both on and off the property. So this screen here just shows you existing and entitled properties that are surrounding the proposed QuickTrip site. Of course, between the site and I-10, you'll see that commercial entitlement has been provided on both north and south of McCartney. And there is, going west of Tucker, however, you do have a little bit less commercial designation. You see some multifamily entitlement, but there is some commercial designation as you get closer to Peart. I do want to point out that one of the proposals associated with this plan is to extend right-of-way for Tucker to the south, and then there will also be some additional public right-of-way east and west-south of the site. The reason why this is worth pointing out is because Tucker has been determined by ADOT, Arizona Department of Transportation, as being the first allowable full-access intersection west of I-10. They, they wouldn't support full-access intersections any closer to I-10. And so the development that is sitting between this site and I-10 would benefit from, from full access, and so that's why this, the east-west right-of-way to the south of the site is proposed. It allows for future development to occur, not only to the east, but also to the south. The elevations provided and associated with the major site plan show a typical convenience store that, that's common to QuickTrip, but a lot of masonry architecture is proposed on all four sides. And of course, the, the fuel canopies aren't anything particularly spectacular, but as you see, the, towards the front of the site, west of the store, is for just typical vehicles. And then to the rear of the store, along the back of the site, would be the truck diesel fueling canopy. The other review criteria I want to talk about, and perhaps one of the most significant ones, is traffic and vehicular ingress and egress. Just kind of wanted to walk through some of the improvements that will be required. Associated with the major site plan, we require a traffic impact analysis that's provided by an engineer that the applicant finds, and then that traffic impact analysis is reviewed by our city traffic engineer with the goal to determine the amount of trips proposed to be generated by the use and how that affects the level of service of the roadways used to support this use. And, and really, the idea is, is that any time the level of service of those roadways fall below an unacceptable level of service, that has to be mitigated in order to support the plan. And as a result of that traffic impact analysis, it was determined there does have to be a number of improvements. I, I do want to start off by saying that adjacent to the development, there would be right-of-way dedication for McCartney Road. So there'd be additional public right-of-way, helping to meet the designated roadway status of McCartney as a principal arterial. Ultimately, it's designed to be a, to be 140 feet wide, so there'd be a 70-foot half-street dedication from the center line. Currently, there's right-of-way south of the center line, just through a roadway easement that's 33 feet wide. And then there would be a number of improvements made to both McCartney and Tucker. The results of the traffic impact analysis did prompt the need for a traffic signal at that intersection, and so that would be installed by QuickTrip. There would be a dedicated right-turn lane going eastbound on McCartney to go southbound on Tucker. There'd be another dedicated right-turn lane to access its driveway to the east of the site. There would be a cross-access easement between the QuickTrip site and the property to the east. And then there would be a dedicated left along westbound McCartney into that driveway. This gives you a little bit of a different perspective of the improvements that would be associated with the QuickTrip development. And then the other thing to point out is that along McCartney Road, the city is planning a capital improvement project where McCartney would be widened, and it would be four lanes from the ADOT area, just before you get to the bridge over I-10 to Pinell. It, it runs the expanse shown here on the screen.
Before you get too far on that one, can you go back to that real quick? So, this shows, is that a, that's not a pork chop then? Because it's not, not a right-in, right-out only, the one on the right, sorry, the furthest right driveway?
It's proposed as a three-quarter. So you wouldn't be able to make a left out of the QuickTrip to go westbound on McCartney, but it would allow lefts in going...
Can you make a right out?
You can make a right out.
So arrow needs to be over a little bit to the left of that, right?
Correct.
Technically, so, because you have a right out there, right?
Yes.
Okay.
There, really, I would have corrected it by adding another arrow, but yes.
Okay, all right. It just looked off, sorry.
Fair enough. And then this gives you a, a little closer view of what those city improvements would look like, combined with what improvements QuickTrip would be doing. This is in the area around Tucker Road and McCartney. And then this is just a little bit further west as you get closer to Palomino. Of course, some of these improvements are also being installed with the developing apartment complex at the northeast corner of Palomino and McCartney. The area of concern, though, is the part that's ADOT-controlled, just before the bridge. Of course, that's not part of the planned city improvements, and a lot of the concerns received is, well, what, what about the, the traffic generated from this use going back towards the interstate? Hey, that's great that the roadway's being widened in front of the site and then ultimately all the way to Pinell, but what about this pinch point here? So ADOT was one of the reviewers of that traffic impact analysis, and they did accept it, provided that QuickTrip make the previously discussed improvements adjacent to their site, the traffic signal, the turn lanes, et cetera. It is acknowledged that the I-10 bridge and ramps do perform at a level of service F, which is considered an unacceptable level of service. However, the amount of impact that QuickTrip is contributing to that is negligible. There's 44 truck trips at peak hour, and a trip is considered one-way. So technically, there's 22 trucks visiting that site at its peak hour, and 196 vehicular trips other than trucks per peak hour associated with QuickTrip. And the reason why ADOT accepted this is that it's not made worse. The delay that is resulting due to this business is not increased by more than 20 seconds, and so therefore QT's presence does not worsen the level of service to the bridge or on-ramps, which is ultimately why ADOT accepted this. Regarding the public notification process, we did follow that which is required by City Code, and of course, we have received many comments. There has been some additional correspondence distributed to you just before the meeting, and of course, there are plenty of people in the audience who probably would like to express their concerns. With regard to recommendations, Planning Commission did forward a recommendation to council on a vote of five to two at their March meeting, recommending that city council approve this zone change, subject to the following condition, and that is the standard condition regarding right-of-way dedication. And the other conditions that I talked about, such as the requirement for a traffic signal, et cetera, is tied to their major site plan approval. And that concludes my presentation.
Well, before we open the public hearing, I've got a couple of things that I want to do. I'm going to allow the council to ask some questions and pose some questions, and then we'll have the applicant come up and make some comments, and then we'll open the public Ask that, when we do open the public hearing, I'll remind you before we do that, but keep your comments to three minutes, obviously state your name for our records, and please honor, honor that timeframe, we appreciate it. And then we'll close the public hearing, and then if the applicant has some comments to answer maybe some of the questions, we'll give them an opportunity to do that. And if the council has any further comments, we'll, we'll open back up the council as well. All right? So, okay, so, council first, do you guys have some questions? Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Lavender.
Can you go back to the slide? I think it's about four back that shows the bridge. From the black line, where it goes to one lane to the bridge, how many feet is that approx, is that black line where it goes to one lane?
Yeah, actually, the black line should be shifted a little bit more to the left where you see that, that dirt road.
So from that dirt road to the, the on-ramp to the east, how many feet is that?
I, I don't know.
So you don't, you also wouldn't know from the, to the bridge either, correct?
Right. From, from the black line to Tucker is under a quarter mile, but I don't know what the distance is from the black line east.
The car speed's currently 35 miles an hour, am I correct?
Yes.
So two car... So two cars, 45, thank you. So two cars heading down 45, a big truck pulling out, we're all going to squeeze into one lane, and the ADOT doesn't think that's a problem? Okay, you don't have to answer that. I have a question on the bridge. Is that funded federally, like the bridge on Cortson, or is that a ADOT-funded bridge to widen it to four lanes?
Yes and yes.
I'd have Monir, our city traffic engineer.
Because I remember when I bought a house in Mission Valley in 2004, I was told that Cortson Road was going to be off-ramp from I-10. It's 20 years ago. I've never heard McCartney Ranch a part of the widening. Is there any plans to widen McCartney Ranch at any time during this decade?
Are you talking about widening the right-of-way for McCartney?
Are there any, are there any plans to make McCartney Ranch's bridge over I-10 four-lanes anytime in the near future?
There, I could have Monir weigh in on that. It would ultimately need to be, but in terms of when that would be planned for, I don't think we have a.
I would think the need to be would be when we extend McCartney Road four lanes and squeeze it into two lanes on a road heavily traveled by youth drivers. Now, the possible of trucks coming out as well is just, I just have real concerns about the safety. Thank you, sir.
Do you want him to answer the question?
Mr. Mayor and the council, if I may respond to your question.
Go ahead.
I'm the traffic engineer. So that bridge that you are looking at, that is a federally controlled freeway and administered by ADOT. So it has to be funded through ADOT. It is not a city infrastructure. At this time, ADOT doesn't have any plan on expanding this bridge in the near future. We are in constant contact with ADOT. They don't have the funding. So if they have the funding, this project will be programmed in their five years, but in the next five years, it is not programmed yet. But to improve the McCartney Road, you heard about that we have undertaken the CIP project for the McCartney Road from the city section next to the ramp up to the Pinell Avenue, but we are also preliminary, we have started the conversation about signaling those ramps. It is very preliminary. We don't have specifics yet, but we are considering different options. I hope that answered your question.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Yeah, ADOT doesn't have enough money for any of their roads, so I think any new improvements on any of our interchanges are going to be made by us or dollars that we can go find from federal opportunities, federal grants, which we have been trying to do for the last five years at Cortson and I-10, and have failed every year so far. But I don't think we should give up on it. I think that we'll get it done, and I think this should be one of those targets. And Larry, we talked about doing some improvements here that were not in the original plans. We have a bond that will help us make McCartney four lanes, five lanes really, with a center lane. So four driving lanes that go from Pinell Avenue all the way to I-10, just short of I-10. And it seems kind of ridiculous that we don't finish it to the, at least to the off-ramps and the on-ramp. So it's another, can't be more than 100 feet. If we add four lanes all the way to that on-ramp that's going to the south to Tucson, and the off-ramp that comes from Phoenix, that becomes the second lane. So there's, it's a through lane, and it's a through off-ramp or on-ramp. So the second lane continues, and it doesn't just stop before you get to these ramps. That would address half of this interchange. And if we put a signal here and a signal on the other side, that improves the safety of both these on and off ramps. And I think it addresses a lot of the traffic issue, which obviously is, it's an issue today whether QuickTrip is developed or not. And so whatever happens here, there's something going to be built down in this area, and it's going to impact traffic on McCartney. It's going to impact that interchange. And what we have to do is figure out a way to address this traffic and move forward with projects that are good projects for the city, that actually will help bring in revenue for the city. I know that's not everybody's concern, but 80% of our revenue that the city operates on is derived from sales tax, not property tax, not other taxes, it's sales tax and shared revenue sales tax that we get from the state. So good quality businesses are important to our revenue, important to the city, important to the services as well. So, and Larry, where are we at on that? I mean, can you kind of maybe help clarify that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, if I can blend some of the remarks that Monir just made to the point that you were raising, Mr. Mayor. So, and I think Mr. Gagliardi is correct. The black line that you see here should be moved closer to the dirt road area there. There is a piece of state land that's in this segment as well. I believe that that's roughly 1,000 feet between that and the ramps, okay? Just to give everybody a context. The scope that the mayor was just suggesting was something that staff was asked to look into last week, and I believe it's likely the study element that Monir was just speaking about a few minutes ago. And it does just what the mayor outlined. It could potentially do what the mayor outlined. It is not included in the initial McCartney Road improvements that were, that we have been designing to this point. Our design would ultimately end at the city limits, at the city right-of-way, if you will. However, it's something that we could certainly evaluate and have discussions with the Arizona Department of Transportation on, and that is extending, if you're traveling eastbound, it would be the furthest lane on the outside that ultimately would merge into the ramp. If you're coming off of the ramp, it would be, and going westbound, it would be the lane. But to Councilman Lavender's point, there's always going to be a pinch point in this, right? But what it does is it perhaps relieves some of the traffic coming, going off particularly off of this area onto the interstate before that pinch point occurs. If you did nothing to those ramps, it certainly would create a more, what I consider to be noticeable pinch point. Monir talked briefly about the traffic signals as well. And these are primarily safety improvements and what I would consider to be functionality improvements because of the capacity issue over the actual bridge structure itself. Traffic signals could be placed at both of the, at both the eastern as well as the western ramp area, again, to slow the traffic, control the traffic, and allow for intermittent type of release of that traffic into the road. And so just to give everybody a context, our initial estimate from a staff perspective, and again, very preliminary because we just started looking at it last week, would be roughly $5 to $6 million. And to even build that with more specificity, you'll find that the signals are roughly $1 million. So $1 million on the east, $1 million on the west, and so you're looking at somewhere between $3 and $4 million for the extension of the lanes up to these ramps. That is not included in our project, that's not included in our budget, is a project that once finalized, the council could actually evaluate. From a timing perspective, we are starting our budget for fiscal year '26. I know that's hard to believe that we're just in October, but it could be included in a capital improvement program if that is the desire of the council. Mayor, does that answer the question? Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Larry.
Go ahead, Matt.
Thanks, Larry Monir, for that, because when we were in a meeting the other day, the mayor and I, Donna was there, and we were drawing this out because we were realizing how big of a thing that is even right now for everybody. So I think it's important that we do everything we can to get that going into our next project so that we hopefully can maybe just do it all at one time. I know it's easy to say, Larry, and he's looking at me like, you got to find $5 million, but, I mean, the people that live here, I think it's very important to them, it's very important to the city to increase the revenue because it's going to help, you know, help that traffic a lot more. So I hope that we really study that and get something pretty good going with that.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, just comment on Councilman Herman's feedback. It certainly is something that we can have sufficient study for, that can, that mayor and council can consider that as part of the next fiscal year budget. But I do think that the dialogue, I know that the dialogue that has been presented and has been made, the comments that have been made, this widening of the, of the, of the bridge structure itself is not in the ADOT's five-year plan. I don't know that it's even been discussed in a 10-year window either. And, but as the mayor has pointed out, there could be the, and I don't want to be, to misrepresent, these things are very costly. These widening of bridge structures are very, this would likely require a brand-new interchange and, but the mayor's point about us pursuing federal funds, that's something that staff routinely does as well. And no doubt that we will likely be put into a position that if we want to accelerate in advance of ADOT, finding the funds, that we're going to have to find some federal funds to do that.
Thanks, Larry. Anthony?
Yes, Ms. Mayor. I just wanted to make a comment. I mentioned this the last time. I'm the one that brought up the freeway, diesels making that left-hand turn if they're heading towards Phoenix from Tucson. That's a tough spot, and without the lighting, the lights there, we can't, we can't do it. There's no way. Or it's a safety issue here. Already, if you go by there, they're coming real fast over the bridge, as well as coming from CEC that way. And so, and to QT, I do not have an issue with QT being right there. I don't. My biggest thing is the infrastructure that needs to be in place with the roadways, and I believe the city is talking about the four lanes, they're on McCartney down to Perk, which I'm excited about that, perfect. But this big thing is that, that freeway, crossing that freeway over the top. And I know it may be down the road that we'll be able to do this. I know we have a lot of people that are against and for, but I believe that if we had the right infrastructure in place, this would be no problem. Just imagine putting what we have at Florence Boulevard down there. And I know it's costly. It's going to cost us, but I just don't see us moving forward without those things in place. And so that's where my statement.
Well, first, I want to thank QT. I mean, you guys have been great partners in, you know, your other facilities here and, of course, all over the Phoenix area. I frequent the one over on 40th Street and the 202. My daughter lives right there. I'm always off there, and it's a beautiful, you know, store there. They don't have diesel fueling stations there. You know, I definitely noticed it the other day. So, you know, so of course, I'm like, well, why, you know, the last meeting that was a concern, you know, is making it a truck stop. And I appreciate you coming back and adjusting that, reducing the fueling stations to three. But I'm still concerned that it still is a truck stop. I understand no showers, I understand no travel center and all those things, but, you know, there was a slide that came up here when you had signage, and I don't know, Paul, or if you guys can find the slide that had the signage on it. If it wasn't really a truck stop, why do we have a signage that says, you know, certified scales entrance? And why do we have, and is that still in? It looks like it because that was in the presentation. And then we still, this one right here, certified scales, because that's for trucks, right? I mean, I mean, that's what, I would imagine, big trucks. But, so that's there, and then we have the parking spots that were reduced, but there's still 11 in the rear of the facility. So I do, I do feel that it still is a truck stop. So, but not because it's, you know, four bays instead of three. So that concerns me. And then, secondly, we talk a lot about the traffic, and exactly what you said, and with Councilmember Lavender talked about, you know, on the infrastructure on the overpass. And of course, I want to thank all the voters in Cascaran for voting on the bond, you know, for the expansion and improvements on McCartney Road. As you all know, we're all on that road all the time, we need it. And so thank you to all of you that voted to, you know, for those improvements. And we're excited for those to start, so we're going to have four lanes now. But we're not talking even, and this I brought up at the last meeting, also is, and Councilmember Lavender touched on it a little bit, is safety and, you know, traffic even going the other way towards Pinell? Or do we want to create another, you know, Pinell? You know, and I understand, the mayor and I had a conversation, and he said, Lisa, this is a, you know, main, you know, road in our city, it's going to grow, this is, you know, things are going to happen here, but is this the right time? And, you know, with traffic and, you know, why do we, why are we encouraging trucks to get off on McCartney when we know we have an issue? I mean, there's an F, it's an F rating. I get it, I, you know, totally respect the traffic engineers, and, you know, they're saying that by having 22 extra vehicles in an hour, it's not going to increase it, but we still have major issues in that, you know, in that overpass and, you know, that area. So, but, so, you know, I just don't know why we're encouraging trucks, you know, to get off in that, in that area.
To get off there now.
Yeah, but they're not, there's, there's fueling stations, and then they're going to go across.
You all have your time to comment, please.
And then they're, and then they're going to go across McCartney to Pinell and get onto Pinell. I'm just worried it's going to be, or people coming from our industrial area coming across Pinell to fuel up and get on. It, I'm just concerned about the traffic going through the high school, going onto Pinell. We're all on Pinell when the free, it is crazy with some of the trucks on Pinell right now. So if this passes, I hope the city is doing something to monitor that. You know, trucks going across Pinell, and someone else, you know, raised this concern at the last meeting too, with, with traffic going on McCartney. So I, I just, I'm looking forward to listening to all of you that came today. I think it's important. You know, I spent a lot of time in that neighborhood this last summer and visiting people at their homes, and I heard a lot of people that were concerned. And so I want to hear though. I mean, there's a lot of people here today, we've received a lot of correspondence, and so I look forward to hearing what you have to say, but, because, you know, we want, we want people, you know, to give us input. And I understand your point. I mean, I understand the economic, I love the idea of QT being there. I love your stores, I mean, I really do. But, but the fueling piece, the scale, it really, to me, still looks, you know, like a, like a truck, you know, facility, and I just think at this point, but, but I am looking forward to hearing what some of our, you know, from the people here in the audience today have to say.
Okay, Bob?
Ditto to everything that Lisa said. I know the last meeting, we made it very clear that we love QuickTrip. I mean, you guys are the premier convenience store, and we welcome you coming. It boils down to that issue of, like Lisa said, why are we, why are we serving big trucks to any extent? And the current convenience stores that I know of, they don't have truck fuel, they do have diesel fuel for pickup trucks and stuff. Now, whether a semi could pull in there and refuel, I don't think so because of canopy heights and types of fuel and all that. But I think everyone, including the neighborhood people, would welcome what we see as your standard QuickTrip store. They're clean, they're friendly, they're, they just, they serve a purpose in our community, and we, and we love them. My fear is, and I do appreciate you looking at this and trimming it back a little bit from the original proposal, but my fear is that even though there are fewer diesel truck fuel islands, I'm afraid that you may seek expansion on that in the future, that you may eventually turn this into more of what we consider a truck stop. And even beyond that, I'm afraid that if we start allowing what we see as truck stops in this area, there's still a lot of room around that, around that I-10 intersection. And I am afraid for our community and our residents in that area. And I am afraid for our community and our, our residents in that area, that could turn into what we've seen at other locations as multiple truck stops when people, when other companies start saying, well, I, I want to, I want to build there too. I want to serve the, the truckers and mine's going to be just a little bit larger than the last one. I worry about going down that path and I, I, I will be voting no tonight on this. And if I could sum up my fears, I think we're leaving a door, i.e. the, the opportunity of having a truck stop at this location. I think we're leaving a door cracked open just a little bit, that we would be better off if we just slammed it shut.
So just a, just a couple of comments. You know, I think that I've heard the word responsibility a couple of times. QT has been responsible in their efforts to, to look at this and curb things back. I applaud you because I, I really feel that you have listened to the community in what, what they've said. It's not what they want. That is clear. I think who is not responsible is ADOT. Because as was mentioned before, it doesn't matter what we put there, that is going to be an area that has to be improved. Unfortunately, it's going to come at our cost and your cost. If we want that to be the responsible way to do it, whether it be $5 million or $7 million, no one is going to want to come into that area like QT has if we don't do something as a city. And I think, I just think it's a crime in itself that ADOT is not more responsible. And they're causing us to lose revenue. And I think that's a very clear message. So I'm interested to hear what the community has to say. I will say that I have received probably 30-some different emails over the weekend. I responded to every one of them. I want you to know that whether you're for or against it, we've taken this seriously. But I've also taken QT seriously because of the fact that they have gone out of their way multiple times to try to make this work.
All right. So I'm going to let the applicant have an opportunity to present your...
Okay. I think I already voted or counted some votes already, but we're here tonight, so I figured I'd come up here and tell you a little bit about QT and what we're proposing. Is the slide deal going to pop? While we wait for that, for your record, my name is Brian Greathouse with the law firm Birch and Cracchiolo. I've been representing QT for 10, 12 years. My firm's been representing him for over 20 years. Been many, many different cities, many different challenges along the way. We're, we're used to some opposition. This seems like there's a little more opposition due to three semi-truck fueling bays. And you're, you're correct, we did listen to the neighbors and we tried to come back with a compromise. We're at three diesel bays right now. We were at, at seven. We were asked to eliminate the truck parking. We did not eliminate all the parking yet because we do think it's, it's needed in that area. We have seen trucks parked along the shoulder. We know that it's a main trucking corridor in the United States along I-10 there. And a lot of the other properties in that area, north, south, and east are already zoned B2, which allows things like hotels, extended stays, motels, restaurants, all of which could have semi-truck parking, right? All of those uses can have semi-truck parking to accommodate people who need parking and need to eat and need to get fuel. And that's why we can't eliminate all the semi-truck bays here. And that's why we came back with three. We anticipate the customers here to be about 82% passenger vehicles and about 18% larger vehicles, probably mostly semi-trucks, but other things too, like boats and big box trucks and big RVs and things like that. And so that 18% of revenue is critical, right? We're all in business. It's critical for this store to, to prosper, and that's why we have not eliminated all of those semi-truck bays. There were many comments about QT. They are a wonderful company. Clean stores, fast, friendly, good service. Their people are out on the site cleaning things, they're talking to people, and that's part of their security mechanism. They have a lot of visibility around the site. The front desk faces the front to cut down on crime, loitering, and stealing and those sorts of things. They have over 50 cameras at their stores inside and out. You're always being recorded. They have great relationships with the first responders. So as we talk about truck stop, and I know we're going to hear that term a lot tonight, and this is not a truck stop, one of the city's legal definition for a truck stop, but this is not TA, it's not Pilot, it's not Flying J, it's QuickTrip. They will operate it well if you allow them to have the very small amount of bays that they're proposing with three. Jim covered the changes very well. We decreased the size of the store, limited the number of bays, and decreased the parking spaces. As we talked about, McCartney Road's going to be improved from Panal down to almost the ADOT interchange. QT is paying for their portion out in front of their site. A lot of times you'll hear development pays for itself, and that's how cities build roadways, is with developers building things. They do put more traffic on the road, but they also build infrastructure. This traffic, or this interchange can really use the signal. I mean, to have two, two-way traffic in each direction, dedicated left and right turn lanes, all stop-controlled, will be a great improvement to safety in the area. Another thing that works very well, as QT's seen, is when two gas stations are kitty-cornered from, from each other. Because right in, right out is the most safest movement, and that's the movement most people want to make because they don't have to wait to turn left out or wait to turn left in. Like I talked about earlier, we think this site will generate about 82% passenger vehicles. And to give you a context of what that would do to McCartney Road today, McCartney Road today is designed to carry about 15,000 trips. Adding the QT trips, you'd still have a little bit of capacity in the roadway for a little more development, about 10.8%. But if you look at what McCartney's going to be, east and west, two lanes, there's going to be plenty of capacity and the maximum of 36,300 vehicles per day. I touched upon it earlier a little bit. QT is a safe and secure site. We might hear stuff about prostitution tonight, drug trafficking, crime, all these things that are stigmas of, of truck stops. And I, I don't hang out at truck stops very much, so I can't tell you yes or no, but I know QT and I know they're going to run a very nice operation here. Their staff is, their staff, their security, everything is just in tune to be fast and rapid response to any kind of problems. And they always partner with local police. A lot of times you'll see the police officers in their parking lot filling out reports and things. We, we were asked about crime quite a bit. This is Lexus Nexus. These are the two QT sites in, in Casa Grande. The, the icon, like the one with the little brown money bag in it, that's a prosecuted crime in the last year. That's probably burglary. I don't know, but that's, that is a crime. As you can see around the other QT sites on Florence, there's no crimes that have been prosecuted in the last year. This is QT's site down in Tucson, which is a big travel, travel center. It's not what's being proposed today. It does have truck services. As you can see, in the last year, no crimes have been prosecuted around there. You can see a few crimes that have occurred further up on I-10 to the west. This is another Goodyear example, that we recently had a Goodyear case, but no crimes have been prosecuted at two different QTs along the I-10 up in Goodyear in the last year. If you look at a truck stop like the one on, what's that, Sanford, Sandfield Drive?
Sanlon, 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 Sanlon.
Yeah, the, the, yeah, the other truck stops are located up there. You can see crimes that have been prosecuted there. I don't know what the yellow star is, I don't know what the gray star is, but you can see those are all crimes that were prosecuted in the last year at that location. I think I'll end there. I want to ask, answer your question about signage and the scale sign. Due to federal regulation, trucks have to weigh themselves, weigh in and weigh out, and it's, it's a big deal to them, so that's why the scale's there. Yeah. And that's all I have. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Any questions?
No.
That's one. Yeah. Again, I want to thank QT. They've been, listened to the neighborhood, made some changes. The scale is kind of something I wasn't expecting, but the other thing I wanted to say though is, you, you said it in so many words, but to be clear, the 18% is probably going to be a deal killer if you don't have the diesel pumps, even if you had a regular QT for a few years until the road got improved. Not necessarily the whole overpass, but the signals and going up there as a city to make it better. I don't know if that's a possible to phase it. It's still with the three, but, you know, that may be something, because it seems like most people say, hey, QT would be good here. I mean, no one's disagreeing with that at all. But, you know, maybe the traffic seems to be the biggest issue, and I don't know if that's even an option, and probably start a whole new thing for that, but, you know, just throwing it, trying to make something work. I, I know.
I could ask my client.
Yeah. So.
Make that conditional, though.
I don't know.
It's a great question. It could have been a solution except land costs, capital improvement costs, roadway off-site costs. There's a lot here and got to get some more bang at, at the front end. So, yes, unfortunately, it is a deal killer. Not because we want it to be, just because people who do the math, doesn't work out for them.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
All right.
Can I? Mayor?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
What you just said would imply that, that you can't make this work in a business plan with, without the diesel fuel for trucks. Is that, is that what you're saying?
It's a, it's a significant amount of the customer base at this location, based on their, our Institute of Traffic Engineer trip generation studies we've done.
Okay. Well, I, I'm no expert in that area, but I will say, when I first heard QuickTrip was, was going to go in at that location, I am at that Circle K across the street sometimes twice a day. And I can't believe how busy it is. And I was not surprised at all that another convenience store would come in and, and want to be right across the street from, from the Circle K. I would guess it's the busiest one in town and one of the busiest in their, in their chain. I don't know if that's true or not, but, but they do a lot of business there. And I, I would question that statement, that QuickTrip can't make it there without diesel service for big trucks. I, I think you'd do wonderful there without, without the diesel. And the Circle K doesn't have diesel, other than the, the smaller pumps for pickup trucks and, and such. And I see those busy every, every day. So I, I, I don't know if falling back on, well, without the diesel truck fuel, we, we can't make it, because that, that's hard to believe. Anyway, just a comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm going to open the public hearing. I do have some cards here. Since you all, the three of you filled out a card, I'm going to call on you first. Let's go with, is it Michael? Seor, I can't read your writing, Michael.
Scortino.
Oh, it's you.
Michael Scortino, 2865 North Rose Lane here in Casa Grande. Yeah, same to you.
Yeah, just, and wait before you start. Don't start him, don't start him yet.
So anyways.
Hold on, Michael, just a second. And just as a reminder, this is the public hearing, so I'm opening the public hearing. And you have, keep your comments to three minutes. The light will indicate to you when you're kind of nearing your, nearing the end, if Gloria can get it working. Yeah, there you can all talk for five seconds.
It's like that GM commercial, you got to push the button.
What are you doing?
I don't know. That's planned on its own.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay. Oh, there you go.
Okay. Go ahead, Michael.
So I gave the address and everything again, or just go on?
No, we got you.
Okay, good enough. I've been living in McCartney Center since 2005, when they, we all had to stand in line for a lottery to get a lot. We decided we wanted to go there. We rented a home just down the street. We got into that one figuring, okay, there's going to be a lot more growth here. Understandable. You know, you need housing, multifamily, townhomes, whatever the case may be. We got three or four, I don't know, Jim, you can help me on that, but three or four different multifamily housing projects going in there. And I think you said at one time about 400 residential homes they're thinking about putting over there. So is there going to be more traffic? Yes. The only thing that I'm concerned about, and I think half the people McCartney Center is concerned about, is we don't want to refuel trucks. End of story. You know, we're willing to, yeah, put a store there. You could put 50 gas pumps there. I know what Chief Austin, I mean, Councilman Austin, sorry. What he's saying is that place is a madhouse. It is a madhouse, because I have to drive by it, you know, to turn into my neighborhood. So I, I know what it's like. Now you're going to put three more apartments there, all these houses. Yeah, do we have a need for another fueling station? I'm like, yes, most definitely. We don't need to be fueling trucks. They can do that in Eloy, they can do that down on the road, down in Chandler, you know. I love QT, everything he does. They wouldn't mind, I wouldn't mind the gas. I wish they go in there as gas pumps, you know, like the Circle K. But he's right. I mean, we don't need it. Coming, coming home, say you're coming from Promenade, okay, and you're going, you're going to get off at 190, okay, and you're going to go west. So you're going westbound on 10, and you're going to go west on McCartney. I'll sit in that turning lane for a good 15, 20 minutes on a Friday, because all the people wanting to go shopping from the east side of I-10, you have the church out there, you have Panal County or Gilo for senior citizens and something. So you have a lot of traffic there. That's a main route from Coolidge. Okay, so the traffic's nuts there. I don't think it'd do the city, no good to put a, a diesel-fueling semi-tractor trailer truck there. It doesn't serve the community like a regular gas station would. That's all I got to say about it. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Michael. All right. Next, Denise Wilder.
Okay. Our goal is responsible growth for our residential area. QT diesel fueling, fueling station for truckers in our residential area is not a good fit. I seen one off the 202 South, and it's huge, and it's not in a residential area. It's up against industrial site. A good fit is a regular QT that we know are nothing at all. QT giving money toward an already bond-approved road project, to me, is just a way to get their project approved. All money is not good money. If you build it, they will come. QT with a sign on the freeway stating auto diesel will increase traffic. Truckers on their CB, breaker, breaker, 19. Truckers on their CB, breaker, breaker, one nine, will notify others. Currently during the weekdays, it's quiet. I live on the back wall, been there since two thousand and five, behind Circle K. From nine PM to five AM, it's quiet. Noise volume only picks up for, up for morning for traffic. With their huge parking lot, truckers would stay throughout the night, even if they have signs posted or states restricted, or if they move, it'll be along the McCartney. We know this, we have seen it. Please deny their request to change the zoning. That will allow them to include the diesel fueling station for truckers in our residential area. That is not a good fit. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Brian Patrick.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, my name's Brian Patrick. I've been a resident of McCartney Center for about ten years now. A homeowner, I've invested in the community. And thank you for taking an interest in that part of town. I like QT, I really do. I got one of those vehicles that takes the, the top-tier fuel. So I frequently use QT, and there's not, I mean, the closest one I got is down here on Florence, or go up to the valley, or the other side of town. I would full-heartedly welcome a community-based QT center there. But not a, I, I can't support a commercial vehicle design center. We don't have the infrastructure there for it. I think everybody's pretty well spoken a lot about it. I'm going to yield the remainder of my time, and thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's it for the speaker card, so is there anyone else who would like to speak? Please come forward. State your name and your address for our record, since I don't have a speaker card.
Hi, my name is Cora Patrick. I live at one six five three East Alameda Place. I'm Brian Patrick's wife. We bought the house there ten years ago, after he retired from the military, to raise our boys. Our boys are now nineteen and twenty years old. They graduated from ASU prep. And as it stands right now, they have to make a left to go to CAC for their college, to get out of that neighborhood. They're building that new apartment building right there. We come out of Alameda, which is a five-lane road. We don't have a traffic signal there. And with the new apartment building that's going up there, that's going to mean more cars going in and out, and needing that roadway right there. Now, if we're putting in semis and backing up more cars, and having more traffic like that, that's just going to compound that and make that more dangerous, not just for my children, but all the other children that are in that neighborhood, trying to go and get their education. I've sat there, in the last ten years, watched, from being able to make a left out there, to sitting there for ten minutes waiting to make a left out there. And so, with all due respect to you, again, I know it's your job to go through city ordinances and find the loopholes, so that it's not a truck stop. But all of us know that that's what that is, at our heart and hearts. That's what that is. If it was in your neighborhood, that's how you would feel as well. That's a truck stop, and no city ordinance, no loophole changes that feeling of that. That's just the way that it is. I really hope that you guys do decide to put in that, that gas station there. I really do. I love QT. It is genuinely, I used to eat there every day for, on my break. Every day I go to work, I would eat there on my break. Half the time I'd eat there for lunch. And I don't eat junk food. So saying that I really do want that as my community, I mean that with all of my heart. But what you guys are wanting, I think would be better suited for a place at like Pinell and I-ten, where ADOT has guaranteed that they are going to do improvements to the infrastructure. That infrastructure improvements stops before McCartney Road. So just so that, that's a reminder for everybody on that council. ADOT's already approved infrastructure changes at Pinell for that type, kind of store. And it would be perfect, because there's a lot of times trucks wind up having to get diverted through our town, because there's a problem between Pinell and Florence. And they'll have them get off at Pinell, and then go down, and then get back on the highway, south of town in Florence. That would be a much better plan for you guys. I'm not saying don't give us our gas station, but for what you're wanting, just an idea. Like, I'm not, I'm not somebody that wants to run people away, and I like to be a solution person, not somebody that just complains about a problem. So, thank you.
Just FYI, there will be a signal at Palomino and McCartney, by the way. It's coming. Yes, sir, go ahead. Name and address, please.
Mr. Mayor and Council, thank you very much for the opportunity. My name's Denton Yeo, and this is my wife Erin Yeo, and we're Canadians. Don't hold that against us, please. We, our first visit to Casa Grande was about twenty-five years ago. And we've been coming back every year since then. Fifteen years ago, we bought a house in McCartney Center. And we very, very much love Casa Grande, we love McCartney Center. So when we heard about the decision for a truck stop being approved by your planning commission, and I'm putting out the planning commission here now, because I think that decision was not a good decision, because what it says is that you're opening the door at McCartney and I-ten for truck stops. I don't think you want to see that. And so, we certainly don't want to see that. And my, our vision was that you're going to see something like you see in Sun, is, what's the name of the? Near Eloy, there's a large truck stop center there, Sunland Gin Road, I think it's called. And there, it's appropriate. There's no residential areas nearby. The planning commission should be taking the consideration, the fact that there is a residential area there. And that's, 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 that's on them to make that recommendation to you. So that is our major concern. I don't want, we don't want to see truck stop in that area whatsoever. Quick, the QuickTrip with only three bays of fueling, and I guess maybe ten parking stalls, is still enticing, the truck stop, okay? They'll have people, they'll have trucks staying there. It'll be very difficult to enforce no overnight stays. There'll be signage that will be seen by the, from the I-ten. So you're, you're going to be encouraging truck stops. Additionally, you're, you're going to see new requests for additional truck stops if you approve this. And you'll have a very difficult time denying those, if you don't, if you don't stop it now, nip it in the bud now. For instance, if Circle K came to you next week and said, we'd like to expand our operation, maybe have ten parking stalls, three diesel fuel stations in the back of our store, are you going to allow that? Now you've got twenty trucks parking there, six diesel, diesel stalls. And, and, and you can see that that's, that can perpetuate itself, and you'll see truck stops built all along there. And that's our, that's my main concern. That's our concern. Erin has sent a letter. I'm not sure if you have any comments to make regarding the letter you sent.
Just a quick one, because I see where time's taken away here, but when development happens in a community, there are some things that add to the value of the property and to the community, and there are some things that do not. And hardly any of us say, yay, it's going to be a truck fueling station slash truck stop being built in our community. It doesn't add to the community, it detracts, it lowers the value of the, of the house. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Just, can I just add one additional comment, just in closing? There's been a lot of discussion about financial gains. Obviously, there's some financial gains to the city with the truck stop, or with the fueling station, but those are short-term gains. What you'll see is a long-term loss of property value and loss of financial revenue from the McCartney Center, if you allow it to go ahead, and if you allow more truck stops to be developed. So I would only leave you with a comment that if the truck stop had been there before we bought a house in McCartney Center, we wouldn't have bought a house in McCartney Center.
All right, thank you. All right, next.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers, other city officials. Good evening. I hope I can get a couple more minutes, above and beyond my three minutes of time.
We'd like to.
My name is Alan Strauss. Good evening again. I've shared most of you the dire consequences in bringing diesel fuel pumps to McCartney Road and I-ten. I sent emails out. The proposal for six diesel pumps to three means nothing to the overall scope of things. Unless I'm dreaming, we never discussed the residents and complained about going from six pumps to three. From the original meeting that we had, we discussed no pumps. Not six to three. I think all the residents here will agree with me. I have called QT Truck Stop in Tucson, reference to parking. QT says here they're going to allow one-hour parking. I'd like to know how they're going to manage that. They're going to have somebody outside with a clipboard and a login sheet, running back and forth, logging in, space one, what time they came in, what time they're leaving, you got to leave? I doubt it. Somebody watching a camera is going to be watching these parking spots in corporate, and doing the same thing, and calling up the store and saying, hey, Joe, spot three, you got to leave, you're there in an hour and thirty-five minutes? I doubt that. So I can't see how it's going to be monitored. Okay, so to me, it's going to be twelve-hour parking. All right. Next. I've Google Earthed other, what they call travel centers around the country. I believe I sent you all the size of the QT pad. These travel centers, if you Google Earth them, are all in industrial, wooded, and desert areas around the country. If you want the city names, I'll give them to you, and you can Google them yourself. There isn't one QT pad such as this in a residential area. I know what you're saying about the zoning, I get it. It's across the street from McCartney Center. You also proposed building buildings, hotels, residence behind QT, next to QT, down the road from QT, and so on and so forth. Most importantly, we haven't discussed the exhaust fumes in diesel trucks. These fumes are cancerous. These. Can I get more time?
We're trying to keep everybody at three minutes, sir, I'm sorry. We got all your information, we've read it.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Joseph Wood. I live at sixteen forty-eight East Joe L. Drive, J-O-E-L-L-E, in, in Casa Grande here. I'm also in the owner-operator of the Culvers in Casa Grande as well. So there are two intersections that I deal with on a daily basis. That is the one on Florence and I-ten, and the one in McCartney and I-ten. And Sunland Gin was also brought up, I think is also a very good point. I just want to say, I, I think we've beaten a dead horse when it comes to, we don't want a truck stop. I think everybody's heard of that. I'm not going to comment on it, because I think it's already been done. But if we look at Florence, there is a very specific feel to that area. It's a commercial area. It's, it's very busy, it's chaotic, there's lights everywhere. It's annoying, it's ridiculous, but it's accepted, because it's a commercial area. There's a lot of traffic. It also requires a four-lane bridge to get it done. And it, and like I said, it's acceptable. Let's shoot on down to Sunland Gin. This is what I would like to say, whoever developed this area did the whole ready-fire-aim approach. Kind of what we're doing with this whole McCartney Bridge area. You go to Sunland Gin, that is the most horrific truck stop, gas station area I have ever seen in my life. You can't get around anywhere, and I feel so terrible for those residents, but guess what? Those residents got there after that truck stop. The majority of them. We all bought a house in McCartney Center, because it is a nice, quiet residential area. My wife and my biggest concern was more houses going behind us blocking the mountain view. Never once did I think that there would be a commercialization of the area just on the south side of us. I don't appreciate that whatsoever. I love QT. In fact, I never in my life went to Circle K. Now that it's in my backyard, I go there. If there's a QT across the street, I'm not going to say anything to the Circle K owners, but I might divert every once in a while. There is a, there is a feel that I've noticed, I, I can see on the board, there are some people who are, we need to make this deal happen, it's going to happen in the future, it's a monetary thing. There are some other people that are exercising caution, it's very apparent. My question is, why? Why does this have to be a commercialized area? This is a road servicing, a rural area, and a residential area. Why is there such a force to make this busy? Look, I come from small-town Wisconsin, where a big city was twenty thousand people. We're way beyond that. I live in Casa Grande, because I like that feel. I don't want to live in Maricopa, I don't want to live in Chandler, I want to live in Casa Grande. And if this commercialization is what our focus in, my question is, why do I have to continue living here?
I'm Andrea Tenney, I live at seventeen thirty East Elegant Drive. I'm right across the street from this proposed QT. And just like everybody else, I have no problem with a QT. I was actually excited to find out that we were going to get one. I'm not excited about a truck stop, and three pumps and a weigh station, it's, it's still a truck stop. I'm not sure how, as somebody said, going from fifteen K to thirty-six K traffic, cars per day is not going to gridlock at that bridge. And I cross that bridge twice a day, five days a week, to go to work, and weekends too. And it's impossible sometimes. So will the taxes make up for the problems that are going to occur? I don't hang out at truck stops either, but I know truck drivers. And they talk about lot lizards, prostitution, drugs, noise. I'm also worried about light pollution. I'm worried about environmental pollution. I'm worried about my safety. When I go for a jog at four o'clock in the morning, am I going to feel safe running down McCartney Road? When there's a truck stop across the street, and the problems it attracts? I'm also concerned that what's to stop them from expanding from three pumps to more pumps? More parking spaces later on down the road? Are we going to set a precedent and allow them to build this not-a-truck-stop truck stop? To turn it into a full-blown truck stop later? Like everybody else, if, if there was a truck stop there, I wouldn't have bought my house. I bought my house three years ago, I love it, I have no problem with the development of the area. But when we talk about appropriate environment, across the street from McCartney Ranch is not an appropriate environment. And when you look at the map and all of the other residential that's going to go in there, it's not an appropriate environment. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. John McGuire, five zero eight eight West Buckskin Drive in Eloy. Very close to the Sunland Gin exit. First of all, I want to take two topics here tonight. Very quickly, I want to say this is, I don't get up here in person as much as I used to in years past, but I want to say congratulations to the new council members and Mayor Fitzgibbons, and Mayor, Councilmember Dugan, who's in the audience tonight. And thank you to Councilmembers Lavender McBride for your service on the council, I appreciate it. We haven't always agreed on everything, over the fifteen years that I've been coming up here, but I never, ever disrespect your service for what you do here, so I appreciate that. Tonight's topic. Again, I am in Eloy now, so I don't come here and claim to be a constituent, or a, have stand-
or have standing in their issues directly, but I still work in town here, and as most of you know, I run a social media Facebook group with over 5,500 people in it now, where we talk only about these issues. In detail, and with knowledge, and with discussion, and not just emotion all the time. And so I'll start with that, that we, I did a poll on this issue over the weekend, and we got 419 respondents to that. That's, for our polls, you guys have done city polls here for different issues, to get 400 responses is significant. It's a significant statistical number. Now, are they all city residents, are they all voters? I have no way to police that exactly. But what I will say is that I've been doing these a long time, and most of my polls go 50%, 50%, 60, 40, 45, 55. This one's 88% in favor of this. I think while I appreciate these people behind me tonight, you also have to consider the good of the entire community, and these people are not any less smart, or less involved, or less knowledgeable, or less informed about what is being proposed here. And 88% of them say this is an important thing to allow in the city. I'll also say that when I was here, every single meeting, and was here participating in every single issue, I remember very well, when the Circle K was being proposed at this exact corner, the same issues the world is going to come to an end if it's approved or brought up. It's not. Whether the fine gentleman, who I appreciate his business, I go to Culvers frequently, he and the others are fooling themselves, they don't think McCartney and I-10 is going to someday be Florence Boulevard and I-10. It just is. That whole zone is all commercial and industrial, the county side is going to be that, on the east side of I-10, it is going to turn into that, whether it's two years from now or five years from now. I believe, as Councilmember McBride mentioned, the state should step up more, but if they can't, the city should find the will to mitigate as many of these as we can, and allow this great business to come to town. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Good evening, I'm Catherine Blaker, 1789 East Chaparral Drive. Thank you for your patience, listening to all of us again. Ditto to everything everybody else has already said, I know we sound like a broken record. Everything except the gentleman that last spoke, I don't agree with him. If he's not a resident of...
Could you speak into the microphone? We can't hear you.
Sorry, if he's not a resident of Casa Grande, I'm sorry, but I don't really think he has a say in the way that our neighborhood is going to be devalued. Our neighborhood will not be as safe. And to QuickTrip, I am in the minority, I don't really care to see another gas station, I don't go to QuickTrip, but if you always get this pushback from residents in the neighborhoods that you want to build, why do you keep going to residents and saying, "Let's build, we just don't want a truck stop in our neighborhood"? Thank you.
My name is Angie McKinley, I live at 1632 East Walter Drive in McCartney Center. First, I would like to point out that McCartney Center at McCartney and Pert is not McCartney Ranch, which is at McCartney and Rodeo and Brown. They're far apart. I feel that City Council is against this project. If we continue with this negative attitude towards growth, knowing this is located near the interstate, we as a city will not get the amenities in our city. This discussion is about traffic. It is not addressing the apartments that will be in the area. The apartment developments are not required to do the road improvements that QT is going to be required to do. This is going to be done at QT's expense, and not the city's expense. I do appreciate the suggestions to try to extend more turn lanes that Mayor McFarland pointed out, but again, these costs are going to end up being on us, as citizens, as taxpayers, as homeowners, as businesses. To think that we're not going to have industry going in that area, as it was pointed out, it's right next to the interstate, that was a bad idea. I thank you for your time.
And just a side note, that the apartment complex is paying for half-road street improvements, so, any businesses that come in and pay for their half-street road improvements, so, just like QT.
There's several others that are going to be off of that area, that are proposed to come in, and one is right next to where QT is going in at, and they're not going to be taking the brunt of that expense.
Well, they all have to have their own half-road street improvements, so, that's a requirement. Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Zeta Boudro, I live at 1650 East Fontana. I live right behind the Circle Cave, that's there now. My statement is in regards to the proposed QT gas station at the corner of Tucker and McCartney Center. As a homeowner, and somebody who actually does live here in Casa Grande, I am opposed to having a gas station with three bays for diesel fueling. The initial proposal of a gas station with a six-bay diesel canopy did fall under the definition of a truck stop, under city code. The reduction in bays no longer meets the definition, but the bays will be there, and they still attract semi-tractor trailer traffic into the area. This will add dangerous traffic to an area that's already overwhelmed during high-traffic hours. I worry about all of our safety, and as this is a route frequently used to access Casa An approval to diesel fueling means we are prioritizing the profits of QT, instead of the safety of our families driving their kids to school, our teen drivers going to and from school, access to the grocery store down the street, and a safe route for those that travel in and out of our town on a daily basis. We can already see the effects of semis utilizing the I-10 exit on Canal. That bridge is better equipped to handle the traffic and still experiences long lines. The McCartney Road Bridge will become a dangerous area for our community, not only for drivers, but for any pedestrians crossing McCartney Road to access the QT gas station. We will soon have an apartment complex next to Circle K, and that will add to the traffic and pedestrians that will be crossing. This area will be similar to the gas stations near Seagull Select, where there's a crosswalk that had to be installed after pedestrians were hit by cars. Our community does not have a need for a diesel fueling station at this location. What we need is responsible growth. We need to care about what our city will look like in 10, 20 years. We must make better decisions that benefit and beautify our city. We must also take into account the opinions of those that live near the improvements that are proposed, and not just, you know, people that actually do not live in our city and want to create opinions that will benefit them financially. Thank you.
Can I make a quick comment on the design that I saw, the new design for the roadway for McCartney? Take me a few seconds, is that okay? Just an observation that I saw.
Keep it to three minutes.
No, give me less than that.
Okay.
One minute.
Going from west to east, towards the I-10, the new design for McCartney Road, is it true what I saw on the design, where two lanes are going to be merging into one to get to the interstate? Is that what I saw on the diagram?
Yep.
Wow, let's open your pican of worms. Can you imagine trucks and cars coming down McCartney in two lanes, passing the light at QT, and going down, and all of a sudden, we're jockeying now? Who's going to go first in the line?
We've had this discussion.
Okay, I just...
And we're going to try and address that.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Catherine Aiken. I live at 2937 North Pecan Avenue in Casa Grande. I am very much opposed to this, and before I guess start, thank you for hearing me out on this. So, this is just, it's not a good fit for that area. It's dangerous, it's, you know, truck stops are associated, as we've all heard before, but again, just to reiterate, drugs, prostitution, human trafficking, it will bring crime to our neighborhood. There's proposed neighborhood developments that are going to be behind where the QT is, they're, you know, everywhere around where the QT, this proposed truck stop is, there are going to be families and kids, and when you have a semi-truck, they have absolutely 100%, they have horrible blind spots, and they're so high up, they can't see, like, what's happening right in front of them. You're going to have accidents, and it's going to, like, people are going to get hurt. Kids could get hurt, like, running around, people trying to cross the street, someone who wants to go out for a jog at, you know, at night while it's still cool. You know, these people are going to be in danger. You're going to be putting citizens' lives in danger. So, the other thing, the lawyer guy said that the reason why they have to keep the parking spaces there, at the truck stop, is because they see that there's trucks parked on the side of the road, which, why they're parked there? Because they're overnight. They're sleeping, they're taking their break. So, those spaces are for truckers who are sleeping, taking their break. They're going to be staying there overnight, and there's no way that it's going to be enforced. Like, really? Who's going to be doing that? So, you also pointed out there was no crime at the QT in, like, on Florence. There's no houses there, like, unless somebody's getting mugged on the side of the street randomly, but that's not the kind of thing that just happens in a non, you know, there's nothing else there, except for the QT, maybe if somebody's going to rob the QT. But, other than that, like, there's no, like, there's no houses, there's no developments, there's nothing else going on there. And then you pointed out that the truck stop that's down the road does have crime there. So, like, the big difference is that there's a truck stop, and the truck stop, you're going to have people like, you're going to have independent truckers that don't have the same kind of oversight or criminal background checks that they would have in regular companies, so you don't know who these people are. They're going to be coming into our neighborhood, all hours of the night, noise pollution, light pollution.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing, and ask if the applicant would like to answer any of those questions or comments.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I'm fondly referred to as the lawyer guy now, so, thank you. First, I want to thank everybody who's came out tonight, was at our neighborhood meeting, was at the planning commission meeting. Even though we have differences, and there's passion and all that stuff coming out tonight, everybody's been very cordial to me and very polite to me, even though we've seen differently on a lot of different things, so, I want to thank everybody for that. There's been some talk about expansion, it's built into the PAD zoning document that there can't be any expansion of these facilities. It's locked in with what's on the site plan, and that's three proposed semi-truck bays. Also, I heard the word precedent, or, you know, what if we allow this? It's just going to continue, and somebody's going to say, "Why can't I have it too?" Zoning laws don't work like that. Every decision you guys make is discretionary on a zoning case, as you guys probably have been advised by your attorney, so there's no such thing as precedent. And this area has always been designated by the voter-approved general plan as business and commerce, which allows light industrial, warehousing, truck distribution facilities, large-scale commercial, it's planned for a lot of intensity. And I know that's not what a lot of the neighbors want to hear tonight, and they didn't know that, but it's on the voter-approved general plan as a decision-making tool for this council. The QT will take about eight to 12 months to permit. It'll take about 12 months to construct, so you're looking at 24 months approximately before a grand opening for it. That's a lot of time to get off-site improvements and solutions in the interim to accommodate some additional traffic, because, I can't remember who said it earlier, but this traffic, perceived traffic problem is not a QT problem. Development is coming. QT is just a one-proposed developer on a four-and-a-half-acre site. There's large masses of property there that are being developed with multifamily and in commercial uses. That's what's going to be there. You won't see single-family homes, because nobody can get a certificate of shared water supply right now. So that's all you're going to see being developed, and it's just going to put more traffic on the road. And that ADOT interchange, and to the extent QT can be a part of that solution, and have those discussions, and help with ADOT, they'd be happy to do it. We do it quite often, because we go on, QT goes on a lot of traffic interchanges, a lot of them aren't built out yet. Rarely, when you go out and develop new and expand, the roadways are not there. Cities don't build roadways and networks, excuse me, and have all the infrastructure in place before the development comes. That would be way too expensive, it never happens that way. So, that's all I have for you. We wish that you approved this case tonight. We think QT would be a great use here, great community partner, this would be their third store here, and we're only asking for three service bays for semi-truck fueling. Nothing else, no truck wash, no showers, none of that other stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. And Larry, I did want to make sure that we put into record the emails that we had gotten. Okay, is there a tally on what you received, or what we've put into record?
Mr. Mayor, we've, from what we have, what the mayor and council had received, that we've been able to obtain as a staff, and what we, what staff has received over the course of the last three or four days, there were roughly five additional emails in opposition, and I believe there were as many as 13 in favor of the project and the case. But as I was looking at my email a bit ago, there's still a few more coming in, so we'll attempt to refresh that, but obviously, there had to be a cutoff time for us to present this evening.
Right, right. Okay. Well, I just want to, I also want to remind everybody, this is, McCartney Road is an arterial, it's a principal arterial road for us in Casa Grande, it will be a major, major road. It's already a major road, it's just not wide enough, and it's way too scalloped, which is one of the reasons why we asked for the bond to fix that. And so that will be done, it's, the engineering is done, I think the contracts are soon to be issued, so the construction will begin on widening of McCartney Road. And I think we need to find a solution at the interchange, because whether QT goes in there or not, that is a problem, and, you know, QT could take 24 months before they're open. We need to find a solution within that same timeframe, in my opinion. So, and then ultimately, continue to work with ADOT to try and improve that entire traffic interchange, because it needs some major improvement. So, that being said, then, I'm going to call for an ordinance number. Gloria?
In ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance 1178 and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from urban ranch to planned area development on property generally located at the southeast corner of McCartney Road and Tucker Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I move to deny ordinance number 1178.
One second. All right, I have a motion and a second. All right, I have a motion and a second to deny, which means you're going to vote yes. Gloria, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Before I vote, Mayor, I do want to, again, thank everyone for your feedback. It's important for us to hear this, and I really hope QT will really look at your business plan again. You can see that people want you here. We know this is a, we know this is a growing area. We know it's a great location, but it's just the whole, someone said, and I can't remember what gentleman it was, you know, why at this point do we want to encourage truck traffic to come, you know, when we're, when we're having these issues? And it's going to be this way for a while, so I'm going to vote no. I mean, I'm sorry, I'm going to vote yes. But again, I just want to thank everyone for their feedback and, and for your continued partnership, seriously, with the city. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Herman?
Foregone conclusion, but I want to thank QT for working with everybody. I want to thank everyone who emailed, spoke tonight, everything. We listened to this. This is hard. You know, you lose sleep over this. You agonize over this because it's our community. But I did realize, thinking a lot about this night, it's up to us to get this road built. I want to thank for the bond passage because we've been thinking ahead on that, but now we got to figure out this interchange so that we can do this, because that is going to be a commercial corridor. There is going to be business there. There's going to be traffic there, but we have to be ready for it. So I'm going to vote yes.
Mayor Protem Edwards?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
I'll probably only hold out here, so just to explain, and I appreciate everybody's input, but I, I'm looking at it from a, I guess, more of a 30,000-foot level in the, in the future development of the city of Casa Grande. And I think that by denying this, we are going to postpone the ability to improve this interchange and to improve McCartney Road. If, if it, if it gets approved, that forces the city into actually doing something, which we are not very good at in terms of necessarily being proactive. And so sometimes, we need to take a step forward so that we can, we can bring this infrastructure to fruition and to make your, your road better, to make that interchange, those interchanges better. And I don't see that, that three truck bays are not going to bring in prostitution, are not going to bring in drugs. There, it's, it's going to be truck passing through. In fact, you all have neighbors who, you have truckers who are neighbors that park on McCartney Road today, and they live in your neighborhood. And so you're really denying them ease of getting diesel and getting back to their job. So I think that it's, you know, you need to look at beyond just yourselves and, and really think of the whole. So I'm going to vote no. All right. So that's done. So we're going to go to reports. It's the last item on our agenda, so I'll start with you, Mr. Lavender.
Real quick, next Tuesday, Abel and Jesus Ramos are opening their gym. Abel will be fighting for the world welterweight championship on November 15th, and so it's an event celebrating his opportunity to win a belt. Also Congressman Siskomani, because it's the last day of Hispanic Heritage Month, so we'll be celebrating Hispanic heritage as well as celebrating these two local fighters.
What's the date and time again?
Tuesday, October 15th, at 5:00 to 6:30. And so it's a community event. We encourage people to come out, meet the Ramos. They're not brothers, one uncle and, uncle and nephew, but both are, and then also the congressman being here. We have food ordered for a nice community event. I'm assuming Pastor Edwards, you're going to talk about the dedication on Wednesday for Pastor Humes, so I'll defer that to you, sir.
Okay.
Just a couple of quick things. Congratulations to the Boys and Girls Club. They received the Eagle Award, which is only 13 percent of the Boys and Girls Club across the nation receive that award. Also, kudos to Kevin Lewis. He actually did a video with Steve Miller about the Thornton Road project, and they showed that at the Board of Supervisors meeting, so thank you for representing us. And thank you to everybody that came out for the day of service that we had on the 21st, and also, we did a city cleanup on Saturday, and I was out there with that. And just a reminder that we've got the business showcase with the chamber on Wednesday. That's it.
Matt?
Downtown, October 19th is Rotary Club's Third Annual Oktoberfest Celebration, 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. Downtown Casa Grande. This Saturday is Viva La Raza at the rodeo grounds. Tons of musical entertainment, as well as some rodeo and horse entertainment and lucha libre wrestling. And got to go to the Sun Life dedication last week. Very nice, very good-looking building on the, right on Florence Boulevard. It's going to be there, four-story, so great addition to our community, good partners. Thank you.
Anthony?
Yes. On October the 3rd, I was able to represent the mayor at Banner Hospital. We have a brand-new MRI machine at Banner. For 40 years, Banner only had one MRI machine, so they would have to wheel people over or get people over there, somehow, patients over there to get the MRI machine. And so we, it was needed. They've spent $7.1 million for this MRI machine, and it looks really nice. And so happy for Banner. They do a lot of good work for our community and for the surrounding cities as well. So I was able to be there on behalf of the mayor for the ribbon cutting for that. This coming Wednesday, October the 9th, at 9:00 a.m. at the Community Garden for Seats of Hope, which is by First Presbyterian Church. They're going to be doing a, we have a dedication of the Pastor Juan Humes Memorial Prayer Guardian. We've really fixed it up really nice, put in some different plaques and things, the walkway that we put in there as well. And Juan Humes, those that do not know, pastor here in town that did a lot in our community, worked a lot with our city and the different, many different entities here in Casa Grande, and done a wonderful job. Passed away last year, October the 9th. And so we're doing the memorial dedication, October the 9th, this coming Wednesday, 9:00 a.m. for the Juan Humes Memorial Walkway.
Behind the Presbyterian church.
Yeah, right behind the Presbyterian church by the Seats of Hope office, right between it, is the Community Garden. That's it.
Lisa? And I'm so glad they're doing that.
Yes.
So well-deserved, too. So you mentioned Councilmember Lavender Hispanic Heritage Month. We're still in it until, I guess, next week, and I just wanted to thank everyone for coming out for the celebra, celebration downtown, especially for some of my fellow council members and staff that showed up. You know, it was Casa Grande Main Street, the Arts and Culture Commission for the city, and the Latino Familia Initiative, and this is continuing to grow, and it was just a great event. And so I'm just happy to see the activities, you know, that are going on throughout our community, and, you know, Oktoberfest is coming up, too, so please, people, get out. Everyone, you know, says there's nothing to do in our community, and this is the time of year that there's so much going on. So thank you. It was, it was a great event. Service, you know, the National Day of Service, I wanted to thank Scott McEwen again, you know, for his continued dedication to just having us remember all those lost on 9/11. And, and one, we did acknowledge and recognize one of our local Carol Kiesler that was killed on September 11th. So really great event, so many young people there doing their service and cleaning up our community, so thank you to everyone that participated. Councilmember Lavender had a, a planning session with his staff and community leaders and businesses for the-
Task force.
The task force. And so just trying to find ways to increase the graduation rate and, you know, finding, you know, fitting, you know, careers with our young people. So thank you for being proactive and including people, and I look forward to participating on that task force. And the anti-crime night, again, great event. It was a great event. It was a great night, and so many public safety, you know, organization. Chief Keen is here. I don't see our police chief here at this time, but, you know, thank you for everything you guys do with the police department and fire department being involved, but it was great seeing our transit, you know, our waste, you know, our sanitation department was there, all the different departments with the city. It's so nice to showcase our city, and there were so many young families there and so many nonprofit organizations that were telling about their organizations and giving out things. So again, great night for our community and, and great event. So the biggest thing for me, though, this week, is I have a new grandmother, so I just had a new grandbaby, so spend, spend the week with that new grandbaby. So that was my highlight, so.
Bob? No report, Mayor.
No new grandbaby, huh?
I can't top that.
I just have a couple of things. We've got the, the Casa Grande Chamber Business Showcase is Wednesday night at property. It starts at, I think, about 4:30, 5 o'clock, 5 o'clock. And again, that's out at the property, so that's a good place to go and kind of catch up on some of the local businesses. And then this Saturday is HOHP, which is the Helping Our Heroes program. It's a veterans' event. They are doing their stand-down out at their McCartney Center, which is out past, it's on McCartney Road, out past Overfield, as you're on your way to Coolidge out there. So it's on the south side of the road, but if you feel so compelled, go out there. It starts at 9:30. And that's about all I've got. All right.
And I just wanted to mention, because Chief Keen is here, it's Fire Prevention Week, and Martha does an excellent job at our fire department. They really do a good educational program, so I just wanted to make a shout-out to the fire department on that.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody. Thanks for being here. Meeting adjourned.